Good evening. Welcome to the Titusville City Council meeting on October 27, 2020 at 6:30 PM. We have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order. Please, in lieu of an invocation, please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand and join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item we have is approval of minutes, and we have no minutes, so we do not have that.
Mayor, did you want to read the speaking procedures?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, please, let me find my notes here. City Clerk, please read the rules for speaking to council.
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions and requests, but not both, and no sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. And finally, citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers will be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes, regardless of the number of items identified.
Thank you. City Attorney, please read the meeting rules for this evening.
The city council meeting may be conducted by utilizing communications media technology as provided in Section 120.54, 5B2 Florida statutes, without having a quorum of council physically present in the council chambers. In order to help prevent the spread of the COVID-19 coronavirus and to comply with all local, state, and federal laws and guidelines regarding social distancing and social gatherings, designated seating shall be provided for the public within City Hall. Individual speakers shall, when directed to do so, be given the opportunity to speak on agenda items at City Hall during the meeting in accordance with City of Titusville Resolution Number 162020. Signs held by speakers are permissible, but no tripods, easels, props, or other demonstrative aid shall be brought into City Hall. In addition to the regular broadcast of the council meeting via closed-circuit television and live-stream YouTube video, which may be accessed through the city's website, video and audio of the meeting will also be provided within City Hall for the public in attendance. As an additional method for public participation, the public may submit written comments via email to city.agenda@Titusville.com or by regular mail to City Council's attention at City Hall, 555 South Washington Avenue, Titusville, Florida, 32796. Written comments must be received by 5 o'clock PM prior to the start of the meeting and include the sender's name, address, and the subject line must specify the agenda item being addressed. All comments will be disseminated to the council members and made a part of the public record prior to any action being taken. Speakers who appear in person will be subject to screening for symptoms of COVID-19, and any persons exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19 will not be permitted to enter City Hall.
Thank you, sir. City Manager, the next item.
Yes, Mayor and Council, good evening. Staff request, based on the number of participants for Item 9B, that we move 9B up on your agenda as the next agenda item, and that will precede Item 5A, which is special recognitions and presentations.
Okay, and we need a...
I'd move to move Item 5B.
9B.
9B.
Yes, ma'am.
So that would be the next one heard. I hadn't heard.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
So we are on 9A, correction, 9B, which is a conditional use permit, CUP Number 2-2020, indoor gun range located at 2300 South Washington Avenue. During their meeting on October 21, 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this item and recommended approval, subject to staff's recommendations and two additional conditions. Condition one is required that the ammunition used on the range be only flangible ammunition. And Item 2, the requirement that all minors between the ages of 12 and 17 be accompanied by a guardian. That was voted on 5/2. The reasons for the two oppositions, one member stated that the use was not in compliance with the surrounding community, it was too close to the public school, and two, one member stated that their opposition was regarding the compliance of Criteria 3, 10, and 11 of the conditional use permit criteria. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a seven-lane shooting range within the existing premier pawn shop located at 2300 South Washington Avenue. The proposed gun range will be open to the general public. A conditional use permit is required in the CC Commercial, Community Commercial Zoning District as an indoor recreational use per Section 2854 of the city's Land Development Regulations. The comprehensive plan, future land use designation, is commercial high-density, high-intensity. The property has frontage on South Washington Avenue, Roosevelt Street, and Jackson Street. The current pawn shop was established on the property in 2018, and the rear, which is the west boundary of the building, faces two buildings and is approximately 11,854 square feet. No expansion in the existing building is proposed according, in accordance with the conceptual site plan submitted by the applicant, the proposed gun range will occupy 2,184 square feet of the building. And Mayor, we do have some people downstairs, so we would like to make sure that they have the ability to, if they'd like to speak, we'll get a card for them to do so.
Sure.
And Mayor, at this time, could I read the quasi-judicial procedures?
Yes, sir.
During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table in the side of the council chambers. Those speaking in favor of a request will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, those who wish to make public comment on the item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, council, staff representatives, and such other representatives as authorized by council. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City Clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council, sign an oath card.
Yes, sir.
If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi-judicial item, such as this item, please submit a card at this time. City Clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Have any council members visited the sites or spoken members of the public regarding the item to be reviewed?
No.
No.
Yes, I drive by it all the time, and people have talked to me about it. I can't remember.
In the event a member has received any communication, verbal or written, please identify who he spoke with and the subject of the communication.
I don't remember.
If you remember. Do you remember the context? Do you remember the context of the communication?
It was just, oh, I know who it was. It was Joe Richardson.
Okay.
And he was saying that planning and zoning initially was opposed to it, and that the presentation the owner gave was fantastic. He said he hoped that we got to see the same.
Okay, thank you.
Member Stokel?
No.
Okay. The applicant will...
And Ms. Bisaka is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions on this, Ms. Bisaka, I'm sorry.
I have a very brief presentation.
Okay.
I want to note that the staff has done an analysis based on the conditional use criteria and consistency with the comprehensive plan. The staff has found that the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and there are three items that were brought to you by planning and zoning with a concern about Criteria 3, 10, and 11. Three is nuisance factors, and there is a recommendation that the sound decibel level shall not exceed the permitted sound level described in Section 13102. So that, we hope, is addressed. The second issue was general compatibility with other properties in the district. Because there is no changes to the external building itself, we did not think that there would be any issue with the particular building. There are adjacent single-family homes, and we feel that the noise code is sufficient. I would note that the recommendation, or I'm sorry, the code requirement is between 50 and 55 decibels, and speaking in your home is about 60 decibels. So that would be the noise standard at the property line. And lastly, Number 11 was whether the proposed change is out of scale with the needs of the neighborhood. Because the property is not having any additional alterations to the building, the staff didn't anticipate that the scale was out of scale. However, those were the concerns of one of the planning and zoning members. The applicant has proposed that a gun range will operate during the same business hours as the existing pawn shop, and, which is Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and the addition of the gun range operating on Sundays from 12 to 5. And finally, I would add that the staff did recommend approval of the conditional use permit with not only the sound requirement, but that the applicant shall use one or a combination of industry-designed standards to, in the planning and construction of the indoor shooting range. And then you have already heard the recommendation about the hours of operation. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Counsel, or does anybody have any questions for Ms. Bisaka? Okay. Vice Mayor Diesel?
Sorry. No comment.
Okay. I see a podium, but I'm not sure who that is. Member Stokel, any comment?
Yes, I just have one question for Ms. Bisaka. This is in regard to the conditions that P&amp;Z were requesting. Is that something that we normally get involved in? Or is that normally something that a business, they have their own rules to abide by for a business? We normally don't get into the details of that.
In my experience, the, there has been only one other indoor range that was approved, and that happened in 2016, and there was no conditions about ammunition. The only condition was noise. And the second suggestion that they made is about the age of the people who could go in and shoot, and, to my knowledge, the operational issues such as that are not typically reviewed by the staff. In addition to that, the statute requires that, provides that local government has regulating powers over construction standards and over zoning. So I appreciate the concern of the planning and zoning, and I know that this was, it was proposed by the applicant, offered by the applicant, but in my experience, it isn't typical that we look at the age of people that go in and out of a building.
Okay, thank you.
Member Nelson?
Peggy, the other range, where was that?
It was located at the corner of Pineido and US 1.
So Melbourne?
No, Pineido.
Oh, Pineido.
Yes, Pineido. Yes, I probably said that wrong.
Across from Shilohs and across from...
Correct, and, thank you.
And it was approved in 2016. It was never constructed, but the conditional use permit was approved, and as I said, the only condition related to noise. I would just comment also that there was single-family zoning to the rear of that building as well. Immediately to the south, there is commercial.
Okay. And a question for Richard, putting you on the spot. I don't have a huge problem with the ammunition being frangible. Is that the right word? Okay. And I understand the applicant has offered to only use frangible ammunition. My concern would be of the requirement of that all minors between the ages of 12 and 17 be accompanied by a guardian, and that sort of seems to run contra the state statute. So I'm sort of like, are we going to have an issue there?
When you say the state statute, are you referring to the statute of preemption that...
Right.
Correct. That statute, under Shooting Ranges, states that, except as provided by other general law, the legislature hereby declares that it is occupying the whole field of regulation of firearms and ammunition used at sport, shooting, and training ranges, including environmental effects. That's 799.0, .333, 82316, which is also entitled Sport Shooting Ranges, states that, except as otherwise provided in the Act, the Act shall not prohibit the local government from regulating the location and construction. So you do have that preemption over ammunition, firearms, but we do apply our zoning and location criteria.
Okay.
But I do understand, potentially from the notes, that the applicant at P&amp;Z had offered, it's his intent to use frangible ammunition, certainly he'll speak to that tonight, and the ages, and you certainly can make note of that, but that's his intent.
Right, thank you.
If I could, I would just add one thing about the ages. And I understand that the shooting range at the Hall of Fame is located in a different zoning category. But I looked today on their website, and they have youth shooting, which is ages 8 and up on Saturday and Sunday mornings.
Okay, okay, thanks. That does help.
Member Jordan?
Yeah, that actually was giving me concern, and I think Member Stokel actually hit the nail on the head. It just seems like we're getting into the operations of a business. And if I owned the business, if I found that I could make more money by changing some of the stuff, if we agreed to this and we agreed to the conditions and approved this, then they can only do those things that we have in there, correct? So, as I heard you say, we normally don't get into the operations of a business, which, in my mind, I don't want you in my business. That's not your job to be in my business. So, looking at B, I see you say staff recommends approval, but you didn't say anything about the conditions.
I'm sorry, there were three conditions that the staff recommended as part of the approval. The first is just the reiteration that the sound decibel shall not exceed the permitted sound level as Section 13102 in the code, and this is on page 455 of your agenda item. The second one is that the applicant shall use one or a combination of industry-designed standards in planning and constructing the indoor shooting range. And the third was the hours of operation.
The Police Hall of Fame, I cannot believe that it's 50 to 55 decibels.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I've never gone out and tested it.
It's loud.
Is it?
Yeah.
Well, that is the, now, they are, again, they're in a different zoning category. They're in Planned Industrial Park. So if you give me one second, I've got a lot of paper. Okay. In Planned Industrial Park, the amount of decibels permitted is higher than against the residential.
Okay.
Let's see, I know I've got it right here. In Planned Industrial Park, it is 65 decibels, which, to give you an example on my handy little form here, that children in a noisy cafeteria is about 80.
I thought alarm system, household alarm system is about 85, right?
Yes, it says OSHA recommends employees not be exposed to noise levels greater than 85.
Okay.
But a normal conversation is about, in your home, is about 50 or 55.
But that's actually the noise that's permeating out of the building, I assume.
Yes, that's what's required at the property line.
Okay, because I'm assuming that there is going to be earmuffs and everything inside there, even though they're using these different bullets.
I believe so, but I'm sure the applicant can answer that question.
All right, thank you.
I see no other lights. If you will turn yours off, sir. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, please call the speakers by card, applicant first.
Yes, sir. Altogether, there are four cards submitted. The first two are representing the applicant, and we distributed some information to you that the applicant handed us. For the applicant, Sean Williams?
Good evening, Council. Sean Williams, 2467 South Washington Avenue. It's real rare that I come before council, ever. I don't think that I've ever been before this council. And part of that is because I try to stay out of business. I try to, you know, when I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I kept everything there, and I didn't want to get involved in projects. The projects that I did get involved in was very few and very rare. But in this particular case, I got involved because I thought it was worthwhile to our community. I was actually there at their shop, having some training, and they mentioned that they were having a gun range, that they were submitting an application for a gun range, and I thought, wow, that's a very hard thing to do in Titusville. And I said, hey, if you want any help, let me know. Well, they called me like that night or the next day, and so here we are. So the first thing I wanted to do is give you a little bit of background. I know that Peggy gave you some, but I was on the P&amp;Z for about 18 years, and in that, we could roughly say in the last 20 years, there was three applications that have gone through to the city for gun ranges. Two of them passed, one of them didn't. The two that passed were both indoor. Now, I can tell you that the one that she was talking about 2016 was, it's abutted by two residential sides. You have one in the back and one on the, was it south side, north side? So, yeah. This was not a concern then, and it shouldn't be a concern now. Part of your packet's there, was part of the system that he's talking about controlling the sound, controlling the ammunition, and that's to address some of those concerns. And hopefully, if you go through some of that, you'll get a little bit more information. But the only one that didn't pass was the outdoor. And the reason why, I believe, was because we looked at, they were adding 1,000 homes off of Grissom, and an outdoor range, you're not going to control the sound. You're just not. This was understood and didn't pass. Same concern was with the Police Hall of Fame. There was a concern with the sound, but basically, that's almost considered an industrial district. At the same time, you had the Astronaut Hall of Fame. That did become a concern, but apparently not big enough concern for council at the time, because it still was passed. And it's been successful ever since. To give you a little bit of background about the owner, he's been in business for about the last 20 years here in Titusville. And I've, in the short time that I've been involved in this, I've watched his business already grow. And I believe that he has the capability to actually do this project, if you guys allow him to do it. You did approve one in 2016. They, for some reason, they decided not to do it, but I believe that he has the capabilities to do this. He's gone above and beyond to ensure that the, all the federal codes, the local codes, the state codes have been met. He's alleviated, sorry, the sound, the projectiles, the air quality, and hazardous waste issues. And I'll get into that a little bit later, and that covers frangible bullets. I believe he's been a good steward to his neighbors, and he's minimized, he's gone so far as to minimize his hours of operation. This wasn't a requirement that they initially proposed on the applicant. This was something that he put up front, and then it became a requirement. Originally, I had told him, I said, look, don't you want to have the same hours as the Police Hall of Fame? And he says, no, I can't imagine my business being open past 7 o'clock, and then I think 5 on Sundays. And I thought, well, that's fine. If this is what you want, then we won't address it anymore. But again, it's showing you that he has been a good steward to his neighbors. As far as the neighbors go, I did approach city staff, and I offered to have a meeting. So it was proposed to meet with the residents, and city staff said, well, it's not a requirement. We don't really need to do that. So we said, fine, you know? But what they did do is they sent out all the notices, and they did get some responses. We might have somebody in the audience here that actually lives in that neighborhood, and that they are for this project, as well as I actually live in that neighborhood, so, and I'm for that project. So, you know, like I said, he's done everything to check every single box that we can think of. I don't see that in a lot of applications. A lot of applications that I've seen is they sidestep things, and he hasn't. So another thing that I wanted to address is, we might just say the elephant in the room, and it's regarding guns. I understand that some people are uncomfortable with guns. I saw it at the P&amp;Z. We saw a couple members. They're not going to, we're not going to change their mind, and I get that. But one thing that I hope the council will understand is that this is a constitutional right to have arms, just like you have a constitutional right for the freedom of religion, the freedom of the press. So rather than look at this as being an issue, you should be looking at this as a solution. Because it's, on top of providing a place to learn how to shoot guns, they're also providing training. They're providing additional training that other ranges don't even offer, and I think that it's going to make citizens more responsible gun owners. In the last several years, gun ownership has skyrocketed, just to the point where if you want to get a special gun, you can't get it. You're going to have to wait. So this type of business here, you want a responsible gun owner, and they can help with that. So going to some of the conditions, I've already said that they've met the federal and state guidelines, and I believe that they've also met the city guidelines. I've gone through every single thing that I can think of, and we've checked off every box. The three conditions were... Uh, the three conditions were to regulate sound decibels, I believe we've done that, uh, the building design within industry standards, and if you look in your packet, you'll see a packet that has, uh, Troy building design, which does accommodate two things at once, uh, it's projectiles, and it accommodates sound. And he also has, uh, reduced hours of operation. He did that before we even have approached, uh, counsel on this. So, some of the things that I wanted to respond, um, to, that came up into the city, um, P N Z meeting, um, so we were not rehashing everything over again, and hopefully I can answer some of the questions before you have a question, was nine issues. First of all, they're installing to an industry standard, um, and you can see the Troy, Troy systems. They have accommodated the noise abatement while encapsulating projectiles. This is the same system that a lot of law enforcement, uh, ranges currently, federal, state, um, currently have, and the noise would be within or below the code. Second is the HVAC system. Obviously, um, if you ever go out to the police hall of fame, you're gonna see that suction, and you're gonna see, um, there's a difference in pressures. He's looking at proposing to do the same thing, but the difference between his range and their range is he's lead-free. Huge difference. Um, and I'll get into that when we get into the, well, the next point, was frangible ammunition. By changing to frangible ammunition, he avoids a lot of liability. Um, regular bullets contain a lot of lead. Not only are you, uh, having to deal with the hazardous waste, you're having to deal with it in the air, and then your HVAC system has to accommodate that as well. Um, when you're shooting, you can't eat, you can't drink, you can't, if anybody knows this, you need to basically, you're there to shoot, that's it. You don't wanna ingest any of the lead from the bullets. These particular, uh, bullets are a safer alternative, uh, to than, uh, traditional ammunition, as well as they, they don't ricochet, uh, the same. As soon as they hit something, they basically disintegrate, and that's another feature that he's offering that other ranges don't offer. Now, bear in mind, there are some people that they're not gonna like, uh, frangible bullets. That's fine. But as far as target practicing, they, they've been, I mean, I've read upon them a, a little bit, and they're pretty accurate. So, if you wanna get good at shooting, and you wanna be safe, and you don't have to deal with lead, this is a good alternative to that. Um, next is about safety. Uh, he's, um, he's offering something that a lot of ranges don't offer, and that's training before you even get a shoot. You go out to any other range in this area, and I, I don't think you're gonna see that. Uh, he's not allowing any outside ammo, and he's gonna be checking it. He is gonna be doing constant surveillance, and if anybody's gone to a range, they say they do, but they really don't. He has to, because he has to monitor what bullets are coming into his range. Um, it will be handicapped accessible. He did put the, the requirement of no person under twenty-one, um, on there without a parent or guardian. Um, and two more points, that, um, he is gonna be limiting the caliber of weapons simply by, he's not gonna be offering every single caliber that there is. In the P N Z meeting, they talked about somebody, could, could I bring a Smith &amp; Wesson five hundred? He said, absolutely not, we're not gonna stock, uh, this type of ammo for that. And as I've already said, he's already met or exceeded, um, the state and federal guidelines for safety. So, a couple more points, and then I don't wanna glaze your eyes over there. Um, point number five. As far as inspections go, he, he's already had the local, uh, police, the sheriffs, and law enforcement say, hey, I wanna come to your range if you open. Now, bear in mind, and Titusville's a little bit more unique, whereas the police department, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, they used to have the power of code enforcement, kind of a dual role. Is that still correct? Or has that changed?
Code enforcement is under the police, yes.
All right. So, if they're at the range, you're kinda gonna get a, uh, inspections all the time if they're using the range, either way, whether they, they want to or not. Um, and, you know, we have seen support from, um, um, law enforcement for this. As I already mentioned, he's reduced, he's decided to reduce the hours, um, so that he was a good neighbor, that, uh, one of the concerns was the vicinity of the high school, and I think that might've been one of your concerns as well. Now, bear in mind, he's already selling ammo. He's already selling guns. This is an existing business, and he can do this freely, and he is. There's no problem with that, but to have a gun range, you know, there, and it seems a little bit odd, because the fact of the matter is, is that no high school kid is gonna be able to go to this range, it isn't an after-school hobby where he's gonna be able to go and shoot, unless it's with his parent or guardian, and then they sign off. Um, at the same time, it's been mentioned that you can go out to astronaut, or the, I always say this, because they're together, but the police hall of fame, and shoot. I did a quick, um, Google search, if you will, and just to see how many high schools shoot, they, they basically said two thousand high schools in the United States have some type of shooting program in high schools. And that's not to mention the J R I T Cs. Um, when I was in school, it was big to, to shoot. So, it's not unheard of, and it's, you know, it's probably better to teach them than to shun them from it. Um, but in, either way, he's basically saying, no, you can't come in unless you're twenty-one year older. Next is about the, uh, the issue of being in the heart of the city. The same concern, you go a mile down, and you, they had a gun range that they could've built, just a mile down. Uh, his business, if you look at it, the east of it is business, the north of it is business, the south of his business, or, and then there's two houses to the west, the immediate, two houses that are residential. This is far better than what was previously approved of. And then lastly, um, you know, I wanna say that expanding, this business can offer expanded gun ownership, uh, for training untrained citizens. The only real requirement that you have to have a gun is you can't be mentally impaired, uh, that you gotta be, I don't know, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-one, and you can't be a convicted felon. Um, I think that they're offering a valuable service to the community, as well as recreational, because they're training the community, and they're offering something, uh, more as recreational value. And that is all I have. Do you have other questions?
And, uh, mayor and counsel, um, we have sent, uh, member Stokel the items that you have presented to the, the rest of the council, and she has in receipt of those.
Could you ask her to confirm that?
What's that?
Could you ask Ms. Stokel to confirm that she's received the documents?
Member Stokel?
Yes, I've received them, and I have them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions?
I see no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, clerk, please call the second applicant.
Uh, Justin Gaudy.
Good evening. I'm Justin Gaudy, I'm the, the owner of the business and the applicant. I don't really have much more to add, but I wanted to make myself available.
Could you give us your address also for the record?
Oh, uh, it's twenty-three hundred South Washington Avenue.
Okay. Continue, please.
Okay. I just wanted to make myself available to you, so, to answer any questions or concerns that you might have directly.
I'd say she might cover just about everything.
Okay.
I, I, I do have one, um, question, a couple of questions, actually. Um, Sean said something, I don't know if it was a slip of your tongue, but he said no one under twenty-one will be able to come without a parent or guardian. Is that correct? 'Cause I, I see on our list, we had something to seventeen.
Right.
Twelve to seventeen.
Yeah.
So, what number is it?
Well, people that, uh, what, the way I want it, I want people to be twenty-one, so if a nineteen-year-old or eighteen-year-old wants to come in to shoot, they need to be with somebody twenty-one, but obviously, that's not gonna be a parent or guardian. If a seventeen, or if a minor, somebody seventeen or younger is gonna come and shoot, I want them to be with a parent and guardian, just for the liability issues regarding my business.
Okay. Uh, just being nosy here.
Yes, sir.
When you, these are frangible bullets that you have.
Yes, sir.
Which is kinda interesting, uh, to me, for sure. And I guess your business case is, you're gonna make your money by selling these bullets, basically, right?
Yes, sir.
Which is a good way of going. How, how do you determine if someone's not bringing, if someone's gonna be bringing in their own bullets? How would you?
Well, because we're gonna sell, so the ammo that we're gonna be selling is gonna be actually in the range itself, so we ha- we have a desk that's gonna be set up there where you're checking in, and where you're gonna buy your ammo. But as people bring in their bags with their guns that are gonna come in, we're gonna have to check bags as people are coming in, to make sure they only have guns and they don't have ammo. And then, obviously, they're not gonna be able to go and shoot if we didn't sell them any ammo, so we're gonna be selling them the ammo as well. So, we do sell other types of ammo in the pawn shop itself, uh, but even the ammo we sell in the pawn shop is not gonna be allowed to, to be able to be brought into the range. So, we, we don't want any cross-contamination. I'm, I'm, I'm a big believer, I think in the future, twenty years from now, there won't be any lead bullets. There's, there's no point for it anymore in order to make these lead bullets, and even though you have HVAC systems and all these different things that you have in these, in these other businesses, it's, it's still in the air, it's still on your skin, you're still breathing, and, and the employees who are in there all day for eight hours in that range watching it, it does minute the amount that they're breathing, but it's not safe. And, and we've evolved so much that we know that it's, that lead isn't healthy for anybody in any kind of way. So, that's a fundamental part of just something I believe in environmentally, and for the health of my employees, and for the people that are shooting there, that I only want lead-free, frangible rounds to, to be shot in there.
And those are frangible bullets, do they sound the same?
Yes, sir. The sound will be the same, they'll have headsets on, and, and all those same things. All this, the, the, the sound abatement system, primarily, it, it helps keep the sound from coming out of the building, uh, but there is a little bit of it, like in between the stalls, it'll be installed on the stalls, so that clap isn't so loud going between person to person, but it would still require you to, to cover your ears, or else you would do damage to your ear.
And, and the last question, I was trying to understand with these bullets, of course, they got a little plastic thing on the end of them, correct? And if they break off?
Well, it's not actually plastic, what they do is they actually take, mainly, they're copper, but they take zinc and a lot of other things, and they hard-press them all together. So, it's kind of like a powder, that they basically press together, and, and it forms the, the actual projectile. And so, when that projectile hits against the fourth, it then again just busts back into powder, because that's what it was, you know, when they pressed it together.
These bullets can harm someone.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And there's a lot of actually, um, police officers and such are now actually moving into fragmenting rounds, because if you had an issue, and you had to, a police officer had to shoot maybe in an apartment complex or something, if it hit an individual, the flesh part, it would do the same damage basically as a bullet would be, but then, as it hits the wall, it would break up, and it wouldn't travel through the apartment and hit another individual on the other side.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Member Nelson, you're next.
I, I think, uh, Mr. Jordan has asked, asked, asked it. Most of my questions have hadn't been answered. I did wanna say, I did look at the Troy system, and I was amazed. I mean, you are really putting in a great system, it looks like.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir, I was, uh, I was for this situation, this gun range, when I came in. Um, I didn't speak earlier because I wanted to hear you all speak, and even hear some questions. Um, I'm more, uh, I can't say I'm more for it, I'm as much for it as I always have been, but I'm impressed with the presentations, I'm impressed with the work you've done to do this.
Thank you.
I'm impressed with the thought that's gone into it, and the thoughtfulness that's gone into it. Um, you, at, by, uh, the previous, um, presentation, uh, Sean, it shows that you're out in front and around the curve. It's my feeling, I'm not very concerned at all, because it's my feeling, if there's a problem, you're gonna say, hey, what can we do?
Absolutely.
I'm not concerned at all, I'm, I'm pleased that you're wanting to come here, I'm, I'm pleased that we're moving in this direction, and I'm, I'm very pleased with the presentation, and I thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Clerk, please call the next card.
Uh, yes, sir, after the applicants, we have two cards. Uh, the first is Herbert Brinson.
Sir, name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name's Herbert Brinson, I live at Fox Holler, twenty-three, seven, nine Fox Holler Drive. I was born and raised here, birthday was yesterday, I turned seventy-seven years old, and I've been hunting all these woods around here, and I went down to that man's store and looked it over. I bought six hundred dollars' worth of guns.
Sir, I just asked for a name in the record, for the record. I have to tell you, you, as, as, you are not an applicant, you have three minutes to speak, and you will be on the timer.
Well, this man's got a good thing for Titusville, because I went down and spent some money with him, looked over his operation, and I understand that it's good for Titusville, because all those boys that was born and raised here, used to carry guns in their old Skeeters and everything around, but the Cape took that where we couldn't hunt no more, couldn't get no more, no place to hunt, you know, except go to Mims or go to, up to Georgia like I do. And, uh, my people's got a place up in Larrysville, Georgia, that we hunt all the time. And I talked to my sister last night, and she thought this was a good idea, because there's a lot of boys from Titusville that hunts up there, and down Boca Raton. And, uh, the only thing I gotta say is I think he's straight. And they, you ain't gotta worry about Titusville High School, I can tell you that now. All they know is the back end, quarterback sneaks and everything else, but what I'm telling you.
Be, be careful.
I ain't worried about him. I had a better coach than him in high school. But I'm just telling you, for y'all's own good, and I know Ms. Roberts, I, I got a pi- a thing of her daddy, when he was making up there, my mama and all of them went to school together. So, I tell to y'all, there's two things I wanna do. I wanna name a street after Ed Poe, and I'm gonna do that, and I ain't got nothing else to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next card, please.
Uh, Stan Johnston. I think this individual may be downstairs.
Mr. Johnston, if you are downstairs, please come upstairs.
So, he left? No, but, but, believe me, he didn't leave.
We have to wait for him to come up. Mr. Johnson, Stan Johnston, name and address for the record, please, sir, you have three minutes.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty point Saturday Avenue. Okay, I have a few things to say. Anybody like to hear what I say, raise their hand. Oh, my goodness, I didn't believe that. Didn't think anybody wanted to hear anything I said. All right, uh, I'm not from around here. I've been here only fifty years, but, uh, when I was, uh, nine or ten years old, I went to camp. A camp that was in West Virginia, and by golly, they had, uh, they had archery, and they had, uh, crafts, and nature trails, and archery, and a gun range, too. So, they taught people there, beginning about nine or ten years old, and they have, and that camp went from, some of you have heard of it, it's, uh, Camp Cliffside, and then Carlisle, and Camelot. Uh, that's, uh, six or seven years of camps, in which we had gun ranges, and we shot twenty-two rifles. So, they brought the people up, uh, young kids up to be responsible for shooting. It was an NRA, um, type range. So, uh, you don't like what I say, but when I came to Florida, and I saw some things here, I came in fifty-one, we had all kinds of things going on that I thought was just kind of backward, like, uh, chain gangs are all black, things like that, and, uh, other things that were just, just weren't all, weren't, weren't right. The schools were just, anyhow, the black schools were terrible. But, but, uh, and also swimming pools, very few swimming pools, people drowning. And here we got surrounded by, Florida's surrounded by water. So, one of the things also is backward is, is that, uh, as far as, uh, education, gun wise. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm still saying neither on this, because I don't know all, all the things about what's going on, but, uh, I think it's important for us to train our young children, and not just the adults, onto, to firing, uh, firing, uh, guns. Uh, it's, it's a constitutional, uh, uh, freedom, and, uh, it should not be infringed upon. I liked what Mr. Williams had to say, and, uh, but I'm, I'm still just putting in my, uh, little bit about, it's, it's, it's worthwhile to discuss. uh, little bit about it's, it's, it's worthwhile to discuss and I appreciate that, that the council is having a discussion on this because we need to have responsible citizens with guns as far as when they hunt and when they defend themselves. And, uh, so, uh, this, uh, it appears to me that this is a step in the right direction. So, thank you for allowing me to talk this time. Thank you, without taking me out.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any other cards, clerk?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Uh, closed public hearing, council discussion. Any questions from anybody? I see none. Okay. Uh, I'm open for, I'm open for a motion.
Uh, Mayor, I've moved to approve conditional use permit number two, that is 2020 indoor gun range with the conditions outlined by planning and zoning, uh, which the applicant has agreed to and the conditions, um, imposed by staff.
Second.
The motion is second. Member Jordan, do you have something you'd like to say?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, uh, we had a discussion about the age. I know the applicant said he's agreeable with it, but are we setting the precedent by putting those two conditions on?
I should have learned something from Ms. Amy Comey Barrett, who never answered any questions about precedent, but, um, I really, I think precedent is determined by this council on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Uh, see no other rights. Okay. Have a motion in a second. Roll call, vote, please, clerk.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, one and all, for showing up.
Mayor, if I could, I, I want to tell the coach that I could out hog hunt him, but he'd never believe me.
Mayor, mayor.
Give us a few seconds.
I might suggest we take a two-minute recess to let those leave and people downstairs who didn't have seats come up.
Okay. You ask them to come up? Somebody going to ask them to come up?
I'd recommend a two-minute recess and then we'll.
On special recognitions and presentations, item 5A, and with permission, I'll read those, um, letters of appreciation that we've received from our employees. From community development, Mr. Steve Adams, Kristen Ashberry, David Benninghoff, Darcy Floss, Joseph Gibbons, Tish Hood, Abell Martin, Samantha Azorio, and Gary Stefanovich. From our fire department, Bobby Cropper, Joshua Ferner, Sean Fisher, Tim Hammond, and Tyler Walker. And from our water resources department, Mary O'Grant, Thomas Perez, and Devante Skit.
Thank you, sir. Next item.
Next item is 6A, which is the municipal code board. The terms of regular members Patricia Bell, open classification, and Jean Carmona Collins, open classification, and Norman Herman, engineer, and alternate member William Kilpatrick, open classification, all expire on 31 October 2020. Regular members Bell, Collins have both expressed, expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on the municipal board and have requested reappointment to another three-year term to expire on 31 October 2023. Regular member Herman does not wish to be considered for reappointment. Alternate member Kilpatrick did express his willingness and desire to continue to serve on the municipal board, but has since, um, asked not to be considered. There are currently no other applications on file for your consideration.
We're, uh, I'll open the, uh, for council discussion. We're reappointing two members.
And, sir, I think you want to call for your cards.
Uh.
So, you have cards? You have cards?
Yes, sir. One card when you're ready. Uh, Stan Johnston.
Okay. Mr. Johnston, name and address for the record.
Uh, Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm looking at this and I'm looking at also item 8A, code enforcement special magistrate. And it appears that, that we're doing away with the code enforcement board. That's what it looks like to me. Maybe I'm wrong, but so, but, but I am in favor of not doing away with it and so are these people who are, are, are want to, uh, to serve on this board. Uh, I think that when you have special magistrates, you introduce more corruption and we've got enough corruption in the city of Titusville already, big time. I mean, like the fraud, fraud that's going on about, about $70,000 that you can't seem to find, it was spent somewhere, that, uh, uh, GeoSynTech engineers, they, they're accused of doing something that they say they didn't. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Jordan has said, uh, has claimed that, uh, I like all the rest of you who claim that I'm just a worthless engineer according to this report, it doesn't exist. So, more corruption, that's, that's corruption. So, so if this is the case, in other words, if we're doing away with the municipal code enforcement board by this consent agenda item, I don't know what we're doing on 6A. If we're, we're appointing these people and then we're going to eliminate them or something. This is, uh, I, I just think it's corruption when you have a special magistrate has so much power, so much power, and he's going to be paid. So, he's going to be in a position to be tempted to, to favor some things and he can put in his pocket or favor his friends and they can put money in their pocket. So, I'm very much against this, very much against it. The, uh, uh, and so I'm also, uh, uh, so I'm for this appointments on 6A and I would like you to, uh, to seriously, to seriously continue this, uh, which has been, which has been, has, has had so much praise. I know when, uh, what's that guy's name? Michael, uh, was, was on board there? Cunningham, Mr. Cunningham. Uh, it's just, it's had so much praise. I'm not sure how well it's doing now, but Michael was on there, I don't know how many years, was it 10 years or so? Uh, Mike Cunningham. So, um, uh, I know that maybe sometimes it struggles and all the other groups struggle and, uh, I think you want it dead. I think this, this corrupt council wants it dead. They want more corruption here and that's what it looks like we're headed for, just like this, this, uh, fraud deal. Thank you.
Next card, please, clerk. Any other cards?
Mayor, um, excuse me for interrupting, but there are, the applicants are here.
Sorry?
The applicants.
Okay. The applicant wish to speak? Okay. Council, what's your pleasure?
You want to do it? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, you, hold on. Well, Member Nelson actually was last, it was up first, rather.
Okay.
Would you want to make a motion?
No.
I would move to appoint Pat Bell and Jean Carmona, Carmona Collins, Collins, Jean Collins. Reappoint them to the municipal code enforcement board.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any roll call, vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Passes unanimously.
And on to, uh, 6B, the historic preservation board. The term of regular members Dennis Jonas, James Green, and Deborah Pettick, and alternate member Janice Schumaker, all expire on 30 October 2020. Regular members Jonas, Green, and Pettick have all expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board and have requested reappointment for another two-year term to expire on 31 October 2022. Alternate member Schumaker has requested not to be considered for reappointment. There are no, currently no other applications on file for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Any cards on this item?
No, sir.
Not hearing any council discussion. Also not seeing any. I'll open it for a.
Motion?
Motion.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve regular members Dennis Jonas, James Green, and Deborah Pettick, Pettick, excuse me.
I have a motion.
To the historic preservation board.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Passes unanimously.
On to 6C, which is the Titusville Housing Authority. The Titusville Housing Authority's written semi-annual report is included in your agenda to pack it and no action is required on your behalf.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item 6D is the student advisory council membership appointment and it's recommended that Ms. Hannah Udo has been selected by the Astronaut High School to serve as the ninth grade representative. If agreeable, city council action is requested to confirm Ms. Udo's membership to the 2021 Student Advisory Council.
Any cards on this item? Council discussion. We don't see any.
Yeah, just, just real quick, um, only because I.
Oh, I'm sorry. Member Jordan was first. His turn.
Uh, yeah, mine's real quick. I just want to, for the family's sake, I want to correct the name. It's, uh, Udo. Last name is Udo and there are many Udos who have played in Little League.
Member Nelson?
I was just going to make a motion to confirm Ms. Udo as a member of the 2021 Student Advisory Council and ninth grade representative of Astronaut High School.
I have a motion in a second. Uh, roll call, vote, please.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, sir.
Uh, your items, which is petitions and requests by the.
Is there anybody that would like to speak on the petitions and requests?
Excuse me, Mayor. I would like to, uh, point out that an email was forwarded to you from Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. That, uh, email is titled, uh, FB, Florida Board of Professional Engineers complaint against engineer Robert Jordan, who's also a council member, uh, against him and his engineering company or companies. So, uh, now this has to do with some things that I have right here, this empty envelope that has no report, this, uh, poster of fraud and, uh, and this, uh, this photograph of floodways that are, that are just about completely blocked by vegetation. So, uh, Mr. Jordan, and I'd say, let's say the council is, is accomplices, they've done some, a number of things that are, I want to say is, uh, illegal and, uh, and unethical and untruthful because on these matters that, for example, the fraud and this empty envelope, there's just lies, lies, and more lies. It's been going on for 20 months now, but you're afraid of the truth. You don't want me here because I'm talking the truth. The truth is that you're nothing but a group of bullies and, and that's fearing the truth or you're cowards. And, and I, I just wonder, you know, with all these, with all these lies and cover-ups and lies and more cover-ups and more cover-ups, maybe you're just psychopathic liars. I don't know. I'm talking about, about, uh, our city attorney and city manager also. So, um, and, and this regard is the way I see it is what you've done is it's a rape and it's a gang bang against the truth. I don't like to use those words, but you know, I don't like the words you use against, the, the words that are against me and GeoSynTech. GeoSynTech can't appreciate this lie, saying that they, they made this report. And these lies are just, well, anyhow, it's, it's, as far as I'm concerned, this is a, it's a rape and a gang bang of, of the truth. And, uh, uh, it's, it's, I'm not sure what you're getting, self-edification, uh, the know the truth and you don't, you're not serving the public with this string of lies, lies. And here's what I've been warned. I had attorney, uh, Hank Evans warn me. He said, "You got to be careful when you talk to the city because they have an unlimited source of funds that they can sue you." Unlimited. So, why don't you sue me? Why don't you sue me? You can't sue me because I'm telling the truth. So, anyhow, I've been warned that you have so many, like over 80 police officers that can watch me. I've been warned about that. I've been threatened, but, uh, right now is that you're jumping on a bandwagon. I'm talking about Julian Nelson, a Rotarian, another Rotarian right here. It's, uh, it's disgusting to me and it's, it's, it's sick. It's really sick what our, our city has come to and it's, and it's, it's, it's continued to proceed. Now, I'm not sure about Mr. Jordan, what's going to happen to him, but, but.
Your time's up, sir.
May I ask for more time?
I see no one making a motion.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Sir, name and address for the record, please.
Christopher Childs, 5627 Enchanted Avenue. I was, uh, talking to a citizen yesterday and they were, um, they're telling me about a situation in one of the neighborhoods here in Titusville about a couple of dogs that are in this, this, this house of disrepair and they've called animal control. I know that's not Titusville's. I know that's not Titusville's, you know, the city's purview, but the house is in serious disrepair, and I think they've had code enforcement called on them a few times, but I didn't know if there's any creative solutions that the city could employ in this circumstance because there are two dogs that are in the house, and I don't have any firsthand knowledge about this either, but it's my understanding that these dogs aren't being fed properly, and the house, you know, the windows are broken out, and so it's not, it's no place to keep an animal, and I would think that it's no place that, you know, that's livable either, but I didn't know if there was anything that, like code enforcement, or if the house can be deemed, you know, non-livable or anything like that, but I just wanted to...
We appreciate you bringing that to our attention. As you say, the dogs are not under our purview. Have there been any complaints on the house?
I think so. As my understanding, they had a, like a temporary pool that was put up, and they got cited for that, but I think there's also, I don't know about the, I think they called the other day. I'm not, I'm not sure. I just wanted to see if, you know, there's anything else that could be done.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yeah, I actually talked to Chris briefly about this yesterday, and I wasn't quite understanding, are the, is there someone living there?
I think there is at least one person living there, but I'm not, I'm not certain.
Okay, so the dogs aren't there by themselves?
I'm not sure about it. I know that, it's my understanding that the dogs are there a lot alone, but I don't know if someone lives there full-time.
And as we talked yesterday, I said the same thing, and you said it previously, that we would need to go through animal control, which I believe is Brevard County Sheriff's over that, and if they could, to me, that would be kind of a step one.
And they've been out there a lot, and I just don't know if they, I think they've cited them and stuff, so I just, I think that, you know, the neighbors have, you know, have these dogs around, and they're scared for themselves too because they're not always watched after, and I just, you know, I just heard about it, and I just, I just felt, you know, concerned too, then I didn't, I know that it's under them, and for them to do something, but I figure I come here too, so that at least, you know, we know about it, and...
Well, if you haven't yet, and I think you have, you turn that into the code enforcement, and it is a process, and, you know, I think we all wish, when we have something that we consider an emergency, they could come out and just, and make it all right.
Yeah, I know.
But at least they could get that started, and again, the animal control seems like a big step, and if they come out there for animal control, they may see some other things.
True. Okay.
Do you wish to make a comment, sir? You had your light on?
No, I agree.
Member Nelson?
100%. If you'd like to file a complaint, you found already with code enforcement, the city does have tools available to deal with establishments that may be unfit for human habitation, may be in a state of disrepair, depends on what level that's at, but I agree, the starting point would be with code enforcement, let them get out there.
Is there a specific complaint you have to place, or just say?
Just let them know an address, and what the nature of the complaint is, and they'll go investigate.
We have the, we have the police chief. Maybe you would want to go back and discuss it with the team, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
I guess there was anybody else? Okay, next, next item? Oh, any, yeah, consent agenda, right?
Yeah, all done with petitions?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Okay, we're on to consent. City council, are there any council members that would like to pull any of the consent agenda items? Clerk, are there any cards on any of the consent agenda items?
Yes, sir. One individual has submitted eight cards.
And with your permission, Mayor and Counsel, I'd like to read consent agenda for the record.
Yes, sir.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve the recommendation for awarding the selection of a special magistrate code enforcement to Gargains Wise. Garganezy? Garganezy Wise? I was never very good on names. Degesta Insalzman P.A., direct staff to negotiate contract for a three-year term with a two-year, one-year renewable for an estimated annual cost of $18,000, and prepare a resolution for city council to approve and accept. Authorize the mayor to execute the agreement subject to approval of final contract terms by the city attorney. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the use of Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract to complete improvements to City Hall Elevator in the amount of $56,112 to Schindler Elevator Corporation of Orlando, Florida, and authorize the mayor to execute the proposal upon review and approval of written documents by the city attorney's staff necessary to complete the work. Consent agenda item 8C, accept the FY 2021 Victims of Crime Grant in the amount of $52,879 to fund the FY 2021 Victims Family Advocate Position, and approve the budget amendment upon receipt of the funds. Consent agenda item 8D, purchase, approve the use of Sourcewell, formerly NJPA, contract for the purchase of 12 police vehicles from Allen J. Fleet Sales, and authorize staff to initiate the necessary instruments to secure the purchase. Consent agenda item 8E, authorize the purchase of 12021 Ford F-250 crew cab four-by-four pickup, 12021 Dodge Durango SUV to include associated emergency lighting and siren packages and the associated equipment from Allen J. Fleet Sales for a total not to exceed $88,889.50. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the wage reopeners in accordance with Article 32 Duration of Collective Bargaining Agreement between the Laborers International Union and North America Local 360 in the city of Titusville. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the purchase of a new 2021 Pierce Custom Pumper Fire Engine from 10-8 Fire Equipment Incorporated, including the chassis and all associated tools and equipment for the purchase price not to exceed $614,125.85, and approve the purchase of all associated extra equipment and municipal emergency services for a total price not to exceed $40,516, total project cost not to exceed $660,000. Additionally, authorize the mayor to execute the agreements and approval of the city staff to ensure the resulting purchase orders. Consent agenda item 8H, approve the purchase of the evidence lockers from sole source vendor Patterson Pope for the quoted amount of $28,872. Consent agenda item 8I, approve the purchase of mobile radios not to exceed $81,872 from Communication International utilizing the State of Florida Contract Public Safety Communications Equipment Phase One radios, consoles, antennas, and repeaters. Approve the issuance of the associated purchase order. Consent agenda item 8J, approve the purchase of PACSET portable radios not to exceed $44,100 from Communications International for the State of Florida Contract Public Safety Communications Equipment Phase One radios, consoles, antennas, and repeaters effective until 6/30/2021, and authorize the issuance of purchase orders. Authorize the city manager to execute the necessary agreement. Consent agenda item 8K, approve the purchase of the Florida Sheriff Association Cooperative Purchasing Program to purchase the budgeted vehicle replacements to Nextron Truck Center of Orlando, Florida, in the total amount of $731,447.04 for the purchase of three vehicles. Additionally, approve the associated budget amendment transferring funds to the capital outlay project for this purchase. Consent agenda item 8L, approve the use of Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program to purchase a tractor and milling deck from the Florida Coast Equipment Incorporated of MEMS Florida in the total amount of $37,879.66. Consent agenda item 8M, approve the impact fee distribution agreement in the amount of $1,272,803 from North Maitland TIFT Fund. Additionally, approve the associated budget amendment allocating these funds to projects utilizing the existing transportation impact fee in the amount of $402,447 held within the city funds. And consent agenda item 8N, accept the drainage and maintenance easement from River Palm Riverfront Development LLC.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, call a card, please.
Yes, sir. Again, one individual, eight cards, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I hope you can give me some more time than 10 minutes. I'm glad these, I'll be both of these people here on the municipal code board, and this...
What items are you speaking on, sir?
Say it again?
What items are you speaking on?
Well, 6A Municipal Code Enforcement Board.
All of the items?
Oh, wait a second, no, 6A, I mean, it's 8A, Code Enforcement Special Magistrate. There you go, on that particular one. I was just looking at, so on 8A, this is of interest to them, I believe, and here's what I've been told by a former council member, is that, as far as how in the world do we have such humongous consent agenda items? So he doesn't want to hear this, he's going to leave, because this is about him, is that what he does, the guy that just left, the city manager, is he has repeated meetings with each council member separately.
Excuse me one second, I have to ask for...
Please stop the clock.
You don't direct anybody, you direct everything to me. You understand?
Okay, you're using my time.
Please stop the clock. I think he's speaking on all the items, and so he has 10 minutes for...
That's correct.
Okay, you have a total of 10 minutes to speak.
I know, I have less than 10 minutes, you already took some of my time.
Do you want to speak, sir?
I do want to speak, and I'd like to have my time.
What, it's 30 seconds? It wasn't even 30 seconds.
30 seconds would cover it.
Give him 30 seconds.
Thank you. Thank you very much, because this is...
Can I have one second?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, sir, will you be good to go there?
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that, I'm speaking about, so a former council member told me, here's the way it works, is that the city manager contacts the, each individually, the council members, and speaks with them, and sees how they're doing, about what they're thinking about, and how he believes the, what's best for the city, and certainly, and he talks with each individually, so. So there is, let's say, a medium or a method to circumvent the sunshine law. In other words, you're not talking to each other, but you're talking to him who talks to the other council members.
He does not do that, sir.
Oh, yeah, according to this other council member, take it to court, by golly, and I'll get you. So anyhow, and it's been going on for years, so it's not just one city manager. So this municipal code enforcement board is an issue of a great temptation for someone to misuse that position for advancement of their friends or themselves, and I'm very much against it, and I've spoken against it repeatedly, but now it's come up on a consent agenda item. It will not be discussed. It will not be discussed, because you've already discussed it with the city manager and yourselves by circumventing the sunshine laws. So I'm opposed to that, because this is another example of circumvention of sunshine law. All of you support this fraud, it is absolutely nonsense and nonsense. In other words, some kind of a $8,000, $70,000 document that I can get, here's what I can get, I can get 1,000 witnesses against you, 1,000 witnesses, all they have to do is check with the public records, public records clerk, she disagrees with you, they just check with that, and by golly, no wonder you won't take it to court. So thank you for doing what you did, because there's no way you can take me to court and win. Now, the same applies for this other thing, this is the, what do you call it here? I mean, we have two council members that signed a petition to have these floodways maintained, and then they changed their mind. Well, one reason why is that they can't answer the question, they're liars. They can't answer the question, where does the water go? They ignore, deny, and disobey the fact that water flows downhill. So that's bad, but let's go on to another item. I have objection to several items here, like the fire engine, I believe what we should have is that, I never saw, unless maybe it is somewhere, but if we're replacing a fire engine, which I think we are doing, maybe I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, is that we should have a surplus value, a surplus, no, not surplus, salvage value for the other one, but maybe that's not, so maybe I'm not that much, but extrication, extrication equipment not to exceed $40,516. So that's, I would think, what do you do with other extrication? Let's go to another opposing. impact fee dispersment agreement. Well, just a few things, is that, is that it talks about collector roads, and I'm not sure what the requirement is for using these impact fees on collector roads, but these aren't collector roads, none of them are. They're listed as Garden Street, Park Avenue, Barn Avenue, DeLeon Avenue, Country Club Drive, Singleton Avenue, those aren't collector streets, those are arterials. So I think you should look into that, because what if it's, we find out that, hey, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't apply to arterials. So that's one thing I'm concerned about, maybe it is. And the amount of money that's going to be spent on planning and surveying and so forth for these sidewalks, you can cut the cost in half, at least, by not having all this surveying and engineering outsourcing and so forth. All you have to do is just get somebody who's got some common sense and go ahead and stake it out. Just stake it out. That's what I've done before for the county. In other words, when they had sidewalks to do on Carpenter Road, it was maybe a half mile or so, I just went and staked it out. Doesn't take long to do that, because you want to know that, you just don't want to pond the water in inappropriate places. So I'm against the, using the money for, that is a cash cow to some engineering company for this particular duty, because it can be done easily by someone who just has some common sense and knows how to put sidewalks in without having, without having an engineer involved. Engineers, I mean, have these, have education on how to do computer programming and all kinds of derivatives and differentials, and they don't apply to sidewalks. So this is, that's an amount of $850,000, and right now is that the city is, needs to understand is that right now is that we are big trouble. That's the big trouble is, as you've been notified on April 28th, oh, I'm sorry, April 28th, 2020, at the council meeting, in which the auditor from Lowermore Associates said the city's in trouble. I'm not an accountant, but he said, we got 60, you total it up, it's not 9 million, it's $65 million unfunded future liability, OPEB. So that's what was discussed in 2018, when we discussed, or not we, when you guys discussed bankruptcy, the word bankruptcy was used by our mayor. So right now is we are not balancing our budget, whatever, we need to, we need to find out what's going on. We're fooling the public, I say, not we, but you guys are fooling the public to think that the city has a balanced budget, because it's been said that many times at council meetings. It's not a balanced budget when you have $65 million unfunded liability. It's not a balanced budget. We need to tell the people the truth, and you're not. So what we do is, is we pay politicians all kinds of money to get them elected, so that they'll lie to the public, and they'll cover up what's really going on. In the city of Titusville, we have tremendous corruption financially. When you misrepresent to the citizens of Titusville that we do not have this $65 million unfunded liability, and you look at it, there's, it even goes back more than 10 years. years. So, it's not just you guys, but we should stop tricking the public, we should tell the truth. You don't want to tell the truth, just like before in this other, all you might talk about is, by golly, it's just a rape and gangbang of the truth. And you're all joining on it together, I'm talking about even the city attorney. So, it appears to me, is whatever you learned in school, when education didn't do you bit of good, and what you learned in church didn't do you bit of good either. Because you're lying and cheating, and you're damaging the public. So, we've got to do something different, and that's what I sent to Mr. Jordan, and also, I sent a note, a special note, to Mrs. Nelson, because I'll probably, I'm looking and following through with her a similar complaint regarding Mrs. Nelson, and she hasn't responded to my email. So, look forward to it, and let's go to another one.
Your time is up, sir.
Okay, ask you for more time, please.
No.
Thank you.
This is not for the benefit of this person, but I have been on council fourteen years. I meet every two weeks before the meeting with the city manager. Never once has he referenced anything any other council person has said, because that would be against the law. He has not done that, he would not do that, he answers the questions we ask him and gives his opinions, never mentioning other council people. Certain people would just make up whatever they want to make up, I guess. Next item, please, sir.
We'll need a motion, and.
Oh, yeah, I need a motion, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda items eight A through eight N.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Member Nelson, seconds, roll call, vote, please.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Passes unanimously, next item, please.
Yes, sir, we're on item nine A, which is the right-of-way vacation for right-of-way twenty-two dash twenty twenty Hope Hammock. At the regular meeting on October twenty first, twenty twenty, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request and recommended approval seven zero. The present request is an amended version of the earlier request, right-of-way three dash two thousand and nineteen, that was recommended for approval, subject to three staff recommendations conditions by the Planning and Zoning Commission on nineteen February twenty twenty, and subsequently approved the subject same conditions by city council on twenty-five February twenty twenty. The applicant was unable to fulfill the first condition requiring that an easement be dedicated to the Florida City Gas over the location of the existing utilities within the alleyways adjacent to the north of the present site. As the request of the applicant was amended, the request to exclude that portion of the alleyway from the vacation request, the remainder of the request remains unchanged from the previous request. Furthermore, Florida Power and Light has issued a revised letter stating that the easement would no longer be required over the facilities located to the west of the site, due to lack of any existing utilities within the portion of the alleyways proposed to be vacated. Staff has therefore recommended approval of the present request as submitted and adopted the resolution in rescinding the vacated request approved by resolution fourteen twenty twenty, and extended by resolution twenty-seven twenty twenty. And Mr. Bisaka is available to try to unwind all that for you.
Before she does, I think I should have asked you to read the quasi judicial, yes or no?
I read those when we did nine A for a public hearing.
Mr. Bisaka, any questions for Mr. Bisaka? Counsel? I see none. Okay. Let me get to my. So, okay, I guess vote on.
Any card, applicant cards?
Okay, we have cards?
Sir, there were no cards in it, I'm not sure if the applicant's here.
No cards on this item?
I have here these requests, but I have.
Okay, sir. I'm a little out of sync here, for some reason, rather.
Yes, sir.
So, at this point, we're.
The applicant has chosen not to speak, and you have no other cards, so it's up to your deliberation at this point, sir.
I can't hear both. I'm sorry. The application.
Yeah, the applicant has chosen, he's here, but he's chosen not to speak, and we have no additional cards, so it's up to councils for deliberation at this point.
Okay, counsel.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Member Nelson, you have the call, here.
Okay, I would move to approve resolution number thirty-two dash twenty twenty, approving the right-of-way number two, twenty twenty, application to vacate the right-of-way located adjacent to the property on South Brown Avenue, and approve resolution number thirty-three dash twenty twenty to rescind resolution number twenty-seven twenty twenty related to the previous right-of-way vacate request.
Second.
Got it right.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
I have to clarify, this motion includes both resolutions, correct? Okay. Okay, Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, next item, sir.
And we're on to item ten A, which is a first reading, and the city attorney will do the first reading for us.
Correct, this is item ten A, ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty, correcting references of terms and code provisions. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to replace obsolete references of terms and code provisions, to ensure internal consistency by amending chapter five animals, specifically amending section five, one oh five, revocation of permit, chapter twelve miscellaneous offenses, specifically amending section twelve dash thirteen restrictions on parking recreational vehicles and other vehicles on public lands at certain times, chapter seventeen streets, sidewalks, and certain other public places, specifically amending section seventeen dash one encroachment on public rights away, seventeen dash thirty-three vacating and abandoning streets and alleys, and seventeen eighty-six underground installation, relocation, chapter twenty-one utilities, specifically sections twenty-one dash one lots served by governmentally owned water sewer reclaimed water lines, twenty-one dash twenty-six unauthorized use of city water injuring waterworks properties and facilities, and twenty-one dash sixty-six enforcement and penalties, chapter twenty-eight zoning, specifically sections twenty-eight dash sixteen pre-existing conditions, and twenty-eight dash forty-four sub-districts described, chapter twenty-nine special districts and overlays, specifically section twenty-nine dash one forty-one commercially zoned districts located in low intensity commercial lane use categories, and chapter thirty development standards, specifically sections thirty dash three eighty-two C design, and thirty-four three ninety-three B applicability of ordinance and resolutions of city to development, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and effective date and incorporation into the code.
And this is your first reading ordinance nineteen twenty twenty, the second reading and public hearing is scheduled to be heard by city council on ten November twenty twenty, beginning at six thirty P.M. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance during their regular meeting on twenty-one October twenty twenty, and recommended approval seven zero.
Mr. Bisaka, any comments? Counsel, any questions of Mr. Bisaka? I see nothing there. Look, do we have cards on this item?
No.
None, right, okay. So, nothing further to do, there is no vote.
Yes, sir, next item is item B, ordinance number twenty dash twenty twenty, removing references to obsolete zoning districts. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to remove references to obsolete zoning districts, Commercial Marina C.M. and Central Business District C.B.D. by amending chapter eleven licenses and business regulations, specifically amending sections eleven dash three thirty-two mobile vendors, eleven three forty special events vendor, eleven three forty-one seasonal sales vendor, and eleven five sixteen temporary auto sales and shows, amending chapter twenty-seven general provisions, specifically amending section twenty-seven dash thirty additional requirements for zoning districts consistent with downtown mixed use, land use, amending chapter thirty-seven definitions, specifically amending section thirty-seven dash one definitions, by clarifying the permissible zoning districts, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and effective date and incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty twenty, the second reading and public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by city council on ten November twenty twenty at six thirty P.M. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance during their regular meeting on twenty-one October twenty twenty, recommended approval seven zero.
Mr. Bisaka, no commas, counsel, anybody wish to hear anything? No? Are there any cards on this?
No.
Okay, next item, sir.
Next item is item C, ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty twenty, relating to site plan review thresholds. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending the application classifications for site plans, by amending chapter thirty-four procedures, specifically amending section thirty-four dash two fourteen application classifications and review schedules, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and effective date and incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-one twenty twenty, the second reading and public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by city council on ten November twenty twenty at six thirty P.M. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance during their meeting on twenty-one October twenty twenty, and recommended approval seven zero.
City staff, any comments? City council, any questions? Next item, please.
Next item is item D, ordinance number twenty-two twenty twenty, relating to minimum lot size for townhomes. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to correct internal inconsistencies and eliminate the minimum five acre lot size for townhomes in multifamily zoning districts by amending chapter twenty-eight zoning, section twenty-eight dash eighty-one townhomes, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date and for incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-two twenty twenty, the second reading and public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by city council at their ten November twenty twenty meeting at six thirty. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance during their meeting on twenty-one October twenty twenty, and recommended tabling to the next regular meeting. The commission requested an analysis of all infill lots in the city that would be impacted by the proposed code change, vote was seven zero, and Mr. Bisaka is available to answer any questions.
Any comments, Mr. Bisaka? Any questions from counsel? I'm not hearing any. Next item, whatever.
No old business, no new business, you're on petitions and requests of the public present?
Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak? That would be you. Okay.
And sir, before we get to the mayor and council report, at the planning and zoning board meeting, as counsel knows, the governor's order expires on one November for the requirement not to have a physical quorum present. So, at the planning and zoning commission, they requested council discuss how your boards were going to be conducted in the future, now that a physical quorum must be present, and the phone-in requirement is really up to y'all to figure out.
We're doing that now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Member Nelson, you're first.
I'll get you out.
I don't know.
My suggestion was that if somebody has a circumstance which would, they could not be present, some kind of extenuating circumstance, surgery, you know, a family member that maybe needs caring for, if there are extraordinary circumstances, my suggestion is that we allow them to be excused from that meeting, and allow them to participate by phone. I know we have, I will say, we have one member, and he is on the Titusville Environmental Board, and he is caring for his mother, who is quite elderly, he is very concerned about her getting coronavirus. And so, he has been participating, I believe, by phone. So, as long as we have a quorum, and it just seems only fair that these people be allowed to participate by phone if they have some type of circumstances which will allow them to do, or prevent them from being there.
Member Jordan?
Yeah, I agree with Member Nelson, I think we should revert back, just like the governor wants us to, to, you know, business as usual, we got to be real careful that people are not just going to use the excuse that they're afraid of the virus, or got something else going on, and just don't want to come to the meeting. I do have a question about the planning and zoning, as it relates to the alternate members, is there a requirement in our bylaws, anything, that talks about alternate members have to be at the meeting?
The bylaws are written in such a way that, at a particular meeting, the chairman should decide at that point whether alternates are needed, and which alternate will fill that position, which I believe he stated he'll do on a rotating basis. That reading of it presumes that your alternates are available to serve if needed, which, in my opinion, means, presumes they'll be there at the beginning of the meeting. The issues you run into is, you know, your members may tell you they're going to be there, but one of them may not appear, whether it's an accident, an illness that day, so you would want an alternate available to serve if needed at the time the meeting starts. You may run into a situation where you have a conflict of interest that's not made known prior to the meeting, and may be discovered at the time of the meeting, and you have a member that may have to abstain from an item due to a conflict, and if your alternate is there, they're able to step in and serve. And these things, I'm sure, could be handled at the beginning of the meeting, you could certainly ask the members, are there any conflicts that we need to address, and you can let your alternates know at the beginning of the meeting if they're going to be needed. But you really may not know that until the meeting time. That's why I know the PNC chairman has stated his reading of the bylaws, and the intent has always been, the alternate should be available to serve at the beginning of the meeting and be present, so at that time, you can determine if you need their services.
But, being there at the beginning of the meeting to determine if you've got a quorum, and being there for the full term of the meeting is their requirement.
It's not just a quorum, it'd be necessary for the full board. I mean, you have to have a quorum to do business, or you can't do business.
Right.
But the point is, the alternative is to ensure you have a full board. The quorum would be for penalty on the zoning, the full board would be seven, and applicants really, and the code is written that it's contemplated that you do have your members appear at each board and be present. That's why if you're going to have someone who cannot serve and call in, it really should be an extraordinary circumstance. And the other reason I say that is, boards such as your planning and zoning, code enforcement, BAA, handle quasi judicial items, and even TEC, and of course, this board, the council. If you have a member on the phone, you have to be real sensitive to the fact that they need to be able to view and see and hear the evidence presented, because they're going to be voting. As you saw tonight, we have a member on the phone, there were two documents that were provided during the meeting that had not been provided prior, so we actually scanned those documents in, provided them to that council member, and if you remember, I verified by her on the phone and the mayor that she did receive those documents, she could see those, read those, as she was evaluating that quasi judicial item. So, that's why it's really contemplated and important to the extent you can, that your board members be physically present.
So, back to what I said, I think what Member Nelson said is the direction that we should go, and then there won't be any question at all what the requirements are. That's my take.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, sir.
I'm lit up, sir. There's nobody left.
It's coming to my, it's my report.
Whoa, 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 let me talk about that, is what I'm saying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the question I have for you is, with the new standard by the governor, do we have, what is it we can do? What power do we have? I mean.
You have to have a physical quorum present, which was not the case, he waived that requirement.
And that's required. And that's required, no exceptions.
And I think we've done that.
We've been there.
Council has done that repeatedly. I think of it one, one time. And then what the PNC was wanting more discussion on is those that aren't going to be able to make it as a physical quorum, what is their process and procedure for?
Right. And I talked to the chairman on that even before I knew this was coming up. And I think I've gone out of my way to not be so hypersensitive to the, to the virus, but respectful of the virus and the people who are concerned about the virus. That being said, I think that there are some on the planning and zoning especially who have some concerns, age, et cetera. And then sometimes, and I guess I'm still in the coaching world here in Brevard County, and there was one game we didn't play because Melbourne had to shut down because of the virus. And then there's another team coming back this week we're going to play. O'Gally had to shut down because of the virus. Merritt Island had to shut down because of the virus. And it's a little concerning to me if I'm on the concerned side where now all of a sudden because, you know, the governor says we're all good now, they need to come back. And again, this, this council can probably say very clearly, I have not been that guy to say, I was the fireworks guy, remember? So thank you. Well, the point I'm making is in some cases, I think that I have empathy and understanding for those that say, I'm really concerned about coming out. And it's not like it's, it's gone. I mean, there's entire high school football teams that had to shut down for two weeks in the last three weeks. So I guess what I'm saying is I want to go forward the best we can, as normal as we can. I believe that the council is already saying what I'm hoping to say, and that is that be as understanding with those who have issues and not force them to come into a place where they feel nervous. I think we do very well here, by the way. I mean, we all walk in with our masks on and walk out with our masks on and, you know, we're spread out and most people have been wearing masks for the entire last four or five months. So I think we're doing a very, very good job here. I just think we're a little naive if we think that it's everybody come back to normal. Yeah, so fireworks.
Anything else on that?
Do y'all understand the direction?
Yes, sir.
We're good. Okay. So mayor and council reports, my report, of course, we have some of it already in there, but I have some items that I would like to speak to. The first of which is this proclamation that I was given at the last meeting. I will not...
Mayor, could we get you to lean forward again?
Sure.
Thank you.
It's that time of night, isn't it? The proclamation is something that I've never seen one like it frankly. But there are several issues with it. One, one is that it, it talks about a, well, the first issue is we don't do it, do proclamations for individual groups. Otherwise, if we started doing that, we'd be doing it for multiple groups in town. And it would be a very slippery slope because we would probably be adding two of these a month or even a week to our task. We don't do that. We, you know, we'll mention something, you know, like if it was veterans, we talk about Poppy Day or those sort of things. But we, but we don't go out with an organization and just add their name in. The second I'm really taken aback by frankly is that this is kind of a reference in here to, specifically, I'll read it whereas, "Our city invites all people to join humanity, humanity task force in celebrating the resiliency and immeasurable contributions of our African American community members." I have no problem with the last part of that. I mean, I agree in equality. But I don't know anything about this humanity task force. And as far as I can see, there are new groups that is just starting. And if we were to invite people, then where to join that group, we're taking responsibility for that group. And I don't know how or why we would do something with a new group that has no background to look at. Anyway, I will, I will not sign it. I would submit to in the future or even tonight that we, we don't go with this sort of thing. It's just would lead us to all kinds of problems and accusations and so forth and so on. I think it's just completely out of line. So with that, I don't know where we go from here. Does anybody want to discuss it?
And you probably just stated that, but is there a protocol for the submission of such proclamations? I know that we've talked about it up here from the council point of view. I brought it up for an issue. I might have been a pastor or something. But I don't know about people who come up and speak and say, I'd like you to make this a proclamation.
I think I can answer that. They, they usually call my office and say they'd like something done. Then I examine what they want to do and make sure it's, it's within the context that we usually do these things in. And we write, we write it. Staff writes it or I will help with it at times, but mostly the staff is used to doing these and wording them correctly and so forth. I look at the text and so forth, as I did with this one. But nobody ever submits a completed official proclamation like this. Member Jordan?
Yeah, of course I got to say something.
I would say, of course.
Of course, yeah, for sure. And you read some, I don't have the one.
Want me to read it to you?
Well, the one, the second portion that you read, because you're talking about the, the group and the...
You want me to read that?
Yeah, just read that portion again.
Whereas, "Our city invites all people to join the human, humanity task force in celebrating the resiliency and immeasurable contributions of our African American community members."
Right.
We're endorsing that group.
No, I don't think so. What I'm saying is, well, okay. I mean, it is your prerogative to do, to do what you think is best. But I think there's clarity there that this wasn't about joining the group. And I think that's what you're, no, it's, it's about joining the group in this thing, but in the spirit of it, but it has nothing to do with joining the group. That, that's, I think is pretty...
In either case, I wouldn't, wouldn't do it. It's not something we would, we have done since I've been here. Take, take these actions and it's mentioned, humanity task force is mentioned three times. And I have no idea what they're about. Apparently brand new from what I saw that was...
Yeah, I'm part of that group. So, yeah, I mean, it's not a bad group or anything like, but I do need to have clarification as far as proclamations is concerned. What are the rules for proclamation?
Over the years, I see that it's been handled various ways. I can tell you, under council's rules, proclamations by the mayor do not require council approval. In fact, they don't even need to be done in council chambers. Is there where many proclamations are done by the mayor in his office and they do not require council approval. We have had instances where individuals come to the meeting.
Right.
And request a proclamation. And council has voted, you know, as a majority, whether or not they want a proclamation prepared for that particular individual or event, usually it's an event. And we've either had a consensus of council or some kind of vote of council authorizing that that proclamation be prepared in a certain way and brought back to you.
Right.
So I have seen that. So to answer your question, there are proclamations. If the mayor feels appropriate and he wants to sign a proclamation, he does not need council authorization. That's, that can be done. There are also the situations I just described where an individual comes to the council as a whole, whether a petition or request. And I've seen that in the last couple of years and request council to authorize that a proclamation be done.
Okay. And sir, I remember, I believe for your pastor for his retirement, we, and I think we did a hundred year old and we recognized individuals.
Ruby, Ruby Clay, we did.
Yes, sir.
We did ninety year old.
Yes.
But it's basically for proclamation is basically up to the, to the mayor to decide. We can, we can bring it to him and it'll be up to the mayor to decide if he wants to do it or not.
I think the mayor can decide your proclamation without your approval.
With or without?
Or council could, could vote that a proclamation be done.
Can council members do proclamations?
No.
I knew you were going to say that. That was a loaded question. I just wanted to ask. I know, I'm going to try for sure. So, okay.
Well, my question is, if we strike the offending language where it doesn't appear like we are trying to get people to join the group, but we are trying to get people to join in spirit with these ideals, would that have the same?
We don't know what their ideals are. They, I know what they say here, but have no history.
Correct.
There's nothing there. How can we endorse somebody that isn't, doesn't even exist yet?
Well, we're not endorsing the group. We're endorsing the ideas of supporting the African American community.
Whereas a group of diverse community volunteers have come together to establish human, humanity task force whose mission is the end of racism through education.
Yep.
It sounds great, but I've seen a lot of groups that claim to do this and they're doing this. I've seen a lot of groups who say they're doing this, but when it gets into the nitty gritty, that's not what they're doing at all. And especially as sensitive as these matters are, I don't think we just jump into something that can be so destructive if there's any problem with the group itself. And there isn't even a group yet. We have been, excuse me, we have been started on a, on a process. The city manager and the mayor elect have gone to group meetings in South Brevard where they have a group of people that's not under the auspices of, of the, the city involved, but they've been doing for how many years?
Twenty.
I think it's twenty five, yeah, twenty five to eight. It was...
Nineteen, nineteen eighty eight.
Yes, sir.
Nineteen eighty eight. And they get to speak to each other and they come up with suggestions, I guess, as a group. And it has nothing to do with the city whatsoever. I mean, not, not under the city auspices. And they do a great job. And it looks like a good, to me, it looks like a great model for us to take, take some interest in and see how that works. It's, if it, the other suggestions that have been made, wouldn't allow the, it has nothing to do with this really, wouldn't allow the, the people to speak to each other because they'd be under the government rules. So that just makes no sense. But again, that has nothing to do with this. I think we have to examine these things very closely and know who we're talking about and talking to. And I certainly would not expect anybody to put this in front of me and expect me to sign it.
Would it be okay if I got a copy of that in my mailbox? Can you make a copy of it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Give you the text right here. You want the official one or the one that just says everything? Yeah, take the official one.
And by the way, Mr. Mayor, that's...
Take both of them, actually.
There's no official one because...
It's, it's the same document. Ms. Virginia just put it on a proclamation format.
Exactly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have anything else on that? That's all I wish to speak about.
Sir, I think you're on council reports.
Yes.
I have a quick one, real quick one.
Member Jordan had his light on.
No, that was...
Okay.
Ah, see? I'd say a B. T. on that one, but I didn't really. I just wanted to say, I got to participate yesterday in the Brevard County Jail. I guess that's what they call it, Brevard County Jail.
It's not a good thing to participate in.
Yeah. Anyway, let me not drag that out. Keep your TVs on. We're not done yet. Participated in a fundraiser yesterday. My sister actually is on the ministry team at the Brevard County Jail. And they, they do a wonderful job. Sheriff Ivy spoke to me about them. I think he speaks a lot of places about it, what they add to, to the, I don't know if the word morale is correct, but certainly the spiritual side of things. And they're not government funded, so they have to do fundraisers. And they had a big golf tournament yesterday and it was, it was a lot of fun. It's a lot more fun when it's not eighty eight or ninety two or anything like that. But, and then tomorrow I get to speak to a Cub Scout pack. I've done a lot of speaking to Cub Scout packs because they earn a badge when I do. So, so they keep asking me to speak to them. So that's, that's kind of fun. So that's pretty much it for me.
Okay. Member Nelson?
Thank you. I actually have two items. I talked to several of the Environmental Commission members and they are chomping at the bit for things to do. I talked to the city manager. One of our Tiesefell Environmental Commission members is doing a low impact development. And as I told Mr. Lurie, you know, these people are wanting things to do. We have staff that's tied up, you know, and these guys can help. So as my dad used to say, actually said about me, use and abuse her, put her to work, make her work. Don't literally abuse them, but...
Yeah, yes, ma'am. We took, we took what you said and asked for...
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. We passed along your items.
And the second thing that I had was our staff has been very diligent in asking, going out for RFPs for different items, trying to save us money, evaluating our contracts. One of those contracts was for the clinic. And with the coronavirus out there, I'm just not real sure that this is the time we want to mess with that particular kind of benefit. So at this point, I would say, let's give staff direction to hold off on that. Let, let the coronavirus settle down and let our city manager come back to us and say, you know, now's a good time to do it.
Yes, ma'am. Just if I could add the, the proposal, they had their first meeting today, which was the, the vendors came in and were given the guidelines. So I, we do have some uncertain budgeting as we talked about during the budget process. I don't, I have no idea where we're going to be or how long the duration is going to be or what we're going to need to do in the future. So this is a big contract and it's a big change. In fact, we were going to change the contract. And the amount of money, I don't know what that would be. And I completely agree with you in canvassing some of our employees. When you're, when you're in a global pandemic and you're talking about changing your healthcare clinic, which is a wellness clinic.
Yeah.
It was a little...
Scary?
Yes, ma'am. So, but what, and I appreciate you bringing that up. We, we have done exactly what council has asked us to do. We have a procurement schedule. So we look at our procurements, our contracts periodically. And we had some, not this council, previous council, we had some long duration contracts that really brought that to the attention of council that how, how did a contract last for, you know, six, seven years? You guys need to keep bidding those out and getting the best deal. So that, that's where this came from. So I appreciate that, but I, I will listen to council and see what your direction is on this particular contract.
I would say look at the services, but, you know, maybe, maybe adjust some of that. But the way things stand right now, I would not want to be an employee sitting there with unknowns facing me, not in the middle, not in the middle of a pandemic. So I would say let's take that off the table until Mr. Lurie comes back to us.
I have a different point of view.
Okay.
I think we have rules.
Yeah.
Rules.
Yes.
That we should go by. And staff was going by those rules. And regardless of anything, if, if we are going by the rules, we can't be faulted. if we are going by the rules, we can't be faulted.
Right.
If we don't go by the rules and something goes wrong, then as is being experienced on many levels now, we are at fault. So I personally feel that we should continue with the course that we were in, and that's going out, contracts, contracts looking at, contract department is looking at it, and they go out for bids, and whoever wins it, wins it. That's the way it should be done, that's the way the rules say, and that's the way I prefer going. So with that, who's next?
I think I was, but now you confuse me.
Remember Nelson, know you through?
I am, I would just say that this is not something that we need to kick out forever, but our numbers are going up, our COVID numbers are going up, and my understanding is they're going to really start rising. Right now, I think they have four people on ventilators in the hospital, and sixteen COVID patients, and they are anticipating that this will continue to climb, and I just, any other time I'd say, yeah, let's go do it, this time I'm just sort of like, can we wait and let everything sort of settle down and then talk about it?
You know when it's gonna settle down?
I'm hoping soon.
Everybody's hoping that, but we don't know that, so this could go on for years.
But we know it's not gonna be forever, I mean.
I hope not.
I hope not, I have plans for next year. I'm sorry.
I think we all do. But it could be extended into next year, and the things that are happening right now, we're going backwards.
Yeah, we are going backwards, and I think we'll continue to go backwards until we are at a point where we have a vaccine.
I agree with you.
I sort of expect to be liberated, is liberated a good word?
Yeah.
Next summer.
And even with that, ma'am, and I appreciate, I'm gonna go back to the budget, I think we did a great job of really working hard on the current budget, I think next budget year will be very challenging for most municipalities, and I just don't know where we're gonna be, and I told council that we would come back to you first quarter and let you know how state revenues are coming in or not, because we just don't know, and, you know, we built the budget based on revenue projections, but I, what we're reading, what we're talking about is budget year, next budget year that we're going to be working on starting in January, will be a very challenging year on many fronts.
So maybe at the beginning of next year, come back and sort of let us know where we are.
Yes, ma'am, we're gonna come back to you at the end of first quarter, which is in January, and let you know
Okay.
what the budget, what our current budget is, but I'm of the opinion, and I could be wrong, but the next budget that we're going to work on and build will be a bit challenging, even more so than what we experienced this year.
Great timing on that.
Vice Mayor.
Tell me more about the rules that the mayor brings up, because whatever, I mean, certainly, I agree with Member Nelson, and I'm, you know, I talked with somebody recently about our church, and we're doing some things out of the ordinary because it's not an ordinary time, we're gonna roll some boards over and not roll them out for some consistency, but, and I do think there's a good idea and a good thought to hold on this because of what's going on out there, however, when the word rules comes up, that could trump everything.
What the, we have a procurement schedule which examines our contracts, and that's the contracting administrator's job to do. When you're talking about specific rules about procurement, we follow the state guidelines. What happened today was the initial meeting, we provided dates, we provide what the RFP, what we're looking for, request for proposal, we believe this one is due back in the thirteenth of November by sealed bid, and we will form a committee, when the mayor talks about rules, it'll be a committee that will evaluate, we will use, on this particular one, our insurance broker, I think you all met Ms. Bush, she's here periodically, and we will form a committee, so the committee will vote and determine the best option, and at that point, we will come back to council, as we've done with all of the contracts, enlist the contract award, and then, as you recall, a lot of them will say, if we can't come to terms with this particular one, we will go to item two or item three.
So we are moving forward as normal?
Yes, sir, we're following our normal procurement rules.
And what are we asking for in here?
But I think what Member Nelson's saying is, due to the pandemic, there's a little fear of changing our health clinic while we're in a global pandemic.
I understand that, and I can get behind that, but the question is, are we within the rules to do that?
Yeah, we're still on current contract with our current vendor, there's nothing that says we need to rebid it now.
We are within the rules, I think that's not a bad idea, but within the rules is a big deal.
Do we have a current contract for a period of time?
We do, we have set rates for the next three years, but this is why we're so early on this one, is that it takes a while to put it together, as you can imagine, find a facility, get doctors, get, so.
With the amount of money that is reportedly being lost by the hospital at this point, they still have to stick to that?
Sorry, I, the contract is a firm fixed price for us, and it's per employee, and there's services that are scheduled to be provided by our current provider.
So what would happen if they just said we don't want to do it anymore?
There's a sixty-day clause on, for both parties to terminate the contract, so the city could say, you know, we're providing notice that we'll terminate as well as our current vendor would be. I, as the manager, don't want to not have a wellness clinic for our employees, I think it's very beneficial, as you all know, I'm kind of a health addict, I exercise and I drink crazy things, and I also take an annual physical, I take a flight physical twice a year as well, so I think wellness is very important, we encourage wellness with our employees, it also helps keep our healthcare costs down because of wellness programs, so.
I want everybody to understand, I have my ethics and the way I do things, other people, and I'm not saying this is anybody I'm talking about, it's an individual, and certainly none of our staff, I, you know, it's, I won't be mad at anybody, but I can't change my position on it, so if others feel differently, that's what we're here for.
Hello? Have my light on. Sorry about that. Actually, two things, I certainly agree with Member Nelson and Vice Mayor Diesel, this is a really tough time, of course, for healthcare, and we don't want our employees to feel like their healthcare is gonna be in danger. As far as the rules is concerned, I got a lot of experience with this, I will tell you, I've had the experience working for Lucky Martin, where we have gone through the proposal because of a client asking us to do something, and a lot of vendors have gone through the process, and at the end find out that whatever was bid, they couldn't afford it, and it ended up in a mess because maybe the existing person who had found out just how expensive certain things are, and is looking at the contract they have now and saying, what's going on here? So I would tell you that it would be, and when we're talking about the rules, I think the city manager and what the mayor was saying was two different things. We have rules as far as what the process is for proposals, for requests for proposals. We also have a schedule, if you will, and that's what he was talking about, when we should put some things out, and so they just decided to look at a list and say, why don't we put these things out at this time? To me, I think that the staff did a really good job of looking at the things, saying, let's put all these things out, but I think because of the environment that we're in right now, it would be right for us to just hold off and wait on this one called healthcare providing, that's my opinion. You better get Sarah, can't forget about Sarah.
Member Stokel?
She's sleeping.
Yes, thank you, sir. I would kind of agree with what everyone's saying. Um, sorry, I can echo. My thing is, I want to make sure that we are following the rules and guidelines, and from what I understand, as has already been stated, we go through this process of putting things out for bid every X amount of years, and I think in this case, I think that's still the plan for this, I think just given the circumstances right now with what's happening with the pandemic, we're still going to plan to do that, we just are holding off on it for a little bit, given the current climate, so that's kind of where I'm at right now. I'd like to still see this happen, just maybe right now is not the best time for it, but still following those rules and guidelines, as the city manager stated, so we can make sure that we are serving our citizens the best way possible.
When was this due to be rebid?
It's in the process right now, sir, yes.
When was it due?
When was the contract up, is what he's saying.
Right now, we are in, there's three, it's three years, we're one year into it of a fixed amount, so we have a base price, and then we have an escalator based on the cost of living for the next two years.
Is that the entire cycle, or was there a cycle in that we missed it once?
No, sir, this is the current one we're in, we've been with Parrish for nine years, I believe.
But we've never rebid it during that nine years?
Yeah, we've had different, we've had different operations, I think Crown ran it once.
Crown, take your care here.
Haven't we been with the same situation for, as long as I can remember, because I was on it at one point?
We've had a Parrish health clinic, but it's been operated in different ways, the current way is that Parrish is operating it by themselves, so.
That begs the point, the question though, is did we already go over the cycle that we were supposed to rebid it?
No, sir, we're fine.
How could it be nine years?
It was operated by different entities, you had, I think Crown was two or three years, and you had. Yeah, I don't remember all of them, but they have been different entities that fell under Parrish, yes, that's correct.
But they were under Parrish, and Parrish's contract?
Yes, sir.
It seems to me it should have been rebid during that period. We didn't have something for nine years and not rebid it. I'm through, I said what I had to say, and I've done what I think should, that I should do, the rest of you, for the rest of you is make your own decisions.
Well, basically, I think where I am is that it's a bad time for healthcare change. Having been with Brevard Public Schools, we had some, there's one, I forget what we called it, but it's in front of Jackson Middle School, it's nice to have that, and I would not want to mess that up for the city employees, I just need to know that we are okay to do that, and that we're within the proper timeframe, and that there is no, what was the word used?
The rule.
Rules, that we're within the rules, if we're within the rules, it's the right thing to do.
We have a contract for an additional two years.
We can do that for additional two years, and that's within the rules.
Yes, sir.
If that's the case, I'm good with it.
Anybody else want to speak? Or you need a consensus on that?
I think I hear four that's saying, let's hang on and give the virus time to figure out where it's at, and give us time to evaluate a budget that we would feel more comfortable with knowing what we have to budget for our wellness clinic.
Okay, within the rules.
Within the rules, yes. And I do, I think it was stated, I really do appreciate staff's oversight of our procurement process, it is rock solid, and it's, when selected, I think, when you get the selection, there's a confidence factor that you have that says it was done correctly every time, without fail.
Okay, is there anything else? Well, does anybody else have any council reports? Okay, staff?
Yep, on to city manager report, and y'all remember Miss Annie Birch, I think she came before council several times, she was wanting to take a city-owned property adjacent to her residence at 505 Lucky, it's a .13 acre partial, and it's being sold in accordance with our administrative policy, and I do need council's permission to proceed with the divestiture of this surplus property.
Do you need a motion or just consensus?
Consensus is fine.
Then that, yes.
Anybody oppose? Nobody opposes, guys, Member Stokel?
Nope, I'm good with it.
And one information item for you, and I'm just gonna go over for the public as well, the meeting schedule as we're coming up towards the end of this council, the last regular meeting of the current council is scheduled to be the 24th of November, and that'll be at 10:30, of course, you have your next November meeting, which is the 10th of November, but the last regular meeting will be on the 24th at 10:30, and after we say farewell to the mayor, we will swear in the new council at 11 o'clock, take some pictures, and then do your presentations and organizational regular city council meeting at 6:30. So just remember where the shuffle of seats are going to be, that seems to always be the fun thing during the organizational period of time, but we will still be exercising social distancing as we go forward, but I'll have five of you up there, and a clerk will be down here with Richard and I.
City attorney, anything you'd like to talk about?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll call this meeting adjourned.
This has been the Titusville City Council.